I'll tell you ahead of time what's on our members' minds and what our association's all about. We are a 1,200-member organization. We serve the residential construction industry, most prominently here in the city of Dallas, but also throughout the Dallas metroplex with the 10 county area. Of course, our members strongly believe that everybody deserves a roof over their home, a roof over their head and an affordable place to call home. But that affordable place to call home has been getting a little bit more difficult and harder to accomplish here. Certainly, part of that's some of the market forces that we've seen and the fact that we have a very desirable place to live, but an awful lot of it also is some of the regulatory hurdles that we see at City Hall, the lack of certainty, some of the expenses that are indeed challenging for builders in the city. And then also some of the negative attitudes that people are probably having a little bit less elbow room than they used to, that they have towards new residents. And we have to counter that and balance a lot of prevailing viewpoints. So, we're going to do, if I can get everybody's attention, four minutes for each question. And with the exception of the first one, it'll just be more introductory. Also, reserve the right to interject if someone hears a little too far off-topic as we go here. Time permitting, we'll have some audience questions. However, I also reserve the right to let the candidates answer those or not. Remember, you're here representing yourself, your industry, your company, and the Dallas Builders Association. And I also really want you all to focus on the pertinent issues that are facing the city right now. So, if you ask anything about how to get an autograph from a beloved Cowboys legend, or if you ask why the stadium is where it is, I'm probably going to move on to the next one. So, just let's kind of stick to the here and now and what's going on. So, I'll have a microphone here for you all to pass around. If I can get that turned on. Okay. And also, David over there has the paddles to make sure that we stay on time. I told him to jump around and do some sort of funny dance if he gets to the time limit. But don't get to the time limit just to make him dance. He'll be your reference there. So, we'll start with an easy question here. We'll just do a three-minute time limit on this one. And Mrs. Gates, we'll start with you. Just want you to briefly introduce yourself to the audience and convey to them what your overall vision is for the city of Dallas.
Do you want us to say "City" or stand up?
Uh, however you'd like.
Well, I'll stand up to welcome all of you and thank you for having me here today. I'm Jennifer Gates and I'm your council member for District 13, and I proudly served for the last six years. And I'm looking for your support for one more term at Dallas City Hall. I serve currently as the Government Performance and Financial Management Chair, as well as two other committees, Quality of Life and Public Safety, and also as the Domestic Violence Task Force Chair. I have championed, as a council member, strong neighborhoods and a safe city. I am proudly supported by the Police and Fire Associations. They know that I respect them and I have their back, as well as championing for them to have a higher salary. We did that in last year's budget because we know we're at a critical time. We are down 500 officers. And at that rate, it's hard. Our response times are impacted, and we do see crime elevating throughout our city. So, that is a number-one priority. We cannot have a city that's not safe. And having more officers is paramount. With the pension crisis, we were led to having down to 3,000 officers. So, we've got to retain and recruit. And regarding neighborhoods, I've got some of the best neighborhoods in District 13 and the best people. We've got best congregations and parks, and we finally have trails. We finally have trails in District 13, both in Vicry Meadow, Sopek Trail, as well as the North Haven Trail that will be opening soon west of Preston Road. Regarding financially in the city, we've got to keep our eye on the city services and really worry about the basics. We've got to continue to fund our streets and our roads and really the quality of life amenities, which include making sure that our parks and our rec centers and our libraries are all funded. So, I'm a council member that's been the council member that has championed the community, and I've also been able to be the collaborator at City Hall necessary so that we can move Dallas forward in the right direction.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller.
Well, thank you so much for doing this. This is our first candidate get-together since we started this race about five weeks ago. We had a debate scheduled for last Thursday that Ms. Gates withdrew from, unfortunately. And I wish this was open to everybody in the district, but I'm very grateful to you for having us together to talk about the issues that are important to you. I'm just curious for, in terms of speaking, how many of you happen to live in District 13? Good, that's great. I want to thank you as an association. When I was mayor, I worked very closely with all of you and all of your issues. And Paul was an amazing ambassador for you. I probably got more calls from him than I got from any other association in the city, and he was a very good advocate for you. I also want to thank you because you are the bread and butter of Dallas and you are increasingly more important as our population increases. You know, back when I was an Oak Cliff City Council member in 1998, we had about 5 million people in the metroplex, and today we have seven and a half. And all those people need to live somewhere and they need to work somewhere. And you and the city together with your elected officials are going to determine where the homes are built, how much they cost, and how they impact the existing homes that are there. And I'm looking forward to our discussion today because, as you said, there are a lot of challenges on both sides. There are challenges for the builders who come in and build something that looks different than the existing housing stock in a neighborhood. And when we get into details later, I walked the Briarwood neighborhood yesterday, which is a laboratory for that very issue that we're talking about. It was amazing to talk to homeowners who would take me outside to their alley, to their side yard, to their neighbor's yard down the street, to show me the impacts that a new-built house has on their neighborhood. And it's also challenging for you because, as you said, it is difficult to work with a bureaucracy, and that hasn't changed in all the years that I've been associated with City Hall. I do see a lot of problems with dysfunction in the process of building homes and doing zoning changes, a lot of communication that could be much better stated to homeowners and people who live in areas that are seeing a lot of change. So, I thank you again for having us.
All right, thank you. We'll keep it with you, Mrs. Miller. We'll kind of have this as more of a general question as well. We'll get into some of the specific developments that you all are intensely familiar with here in the next question. But for now, I just want to kind of focus on, when it comes to new development, especially residential construction, what do you think the city is doing right? And what are the things that you think the city is not doing correctly? In other words, what current policies and practices would you change and which ones are currently in place that you would champion?
Well, this is the best quote that I had from your website, which I loved, which is from Jeff Dorkin, who said, "I enjoy building homes that fit into existing neighborhoods, old and new. Prairie, craftsman, transitional, and modern homes can be found throughout the city. Many were built by Dallas Building Association members, past and present." And if that remains the motto and the creed for your association, then I think that there are very good days ahead because neighborhoods are in transition all over the city. There are some that remarkably, like the Disney Streets in our district, that have been able to retain kind of the lower-scale, large-yards kind of atmosphere that they treasure, even though they're not a conservation district. But again, in Briarwood yesterday, it was just shocking to go from a tiny bungalow to a giant, giant home next to it. And people are shocked and confused by it. And there really needs to be more conversation between the city and the builders and the homeowners about what's happening to our city. So, I feel optimistic that we need to continue to build housing. I'm very concerned, in large part on certain parts of town, that I feel that we are not looking down from the 30,000-foot level, not looking down on a planning level and looking at the future and what's best for a community. Preston Center is one of those. I have worked with Councilwoman Gates for the last two years on this PD-15 rezoning. Before the rezoning started, I served on a task force for the councilwoman. I helped raise $100,000 in private money to match tax dollars to do a study to determine a vision for the Preston Center area. And after the city council unanimously approved it, in January 2017, there was a fire behind the pink wall. The condominium burned, and all the developers came in and said, "We can't abide by the plan. It isn't dense enough. We don't like the plan." And Councilwoman Gates said, "Fine." And so, we have not had the plan in effect for two years. And as a result of that, we have seven new high-rise towers proposed for Preston Center. Seven. And there's a vote in two weeks on four of them, all at one time. Two 24-story towers between the existing Athena and Preston Tower, with two towers that are 10 stories behind that. 90% of the people behind the pink wall, which as you know is the largest condo owner-occupied community in the city, that needs to be updated, especially because there's been a fire, but 90% of those owners oppose this rezoning and have opposed it for two years. But there's a vote in two weeks where the neighbors are having to get busted's commission to pick up elderly people, to take them down to City Hall to express their unhappiness. And that is just not the way the system ought to work. We ought to have a collaborative effort so that the builders, the developers, City Hall, and homeowners all agree on the vision for their community. It's not hard to do. We all want the same thing. We want safe, walkable, pretty homes, near retail, near restaurants. This is the 21st century. We want to get out of our cars. We don't want to worsen traffic. We want to walk. That's what we want. But we need to work together to accomplish it, which I will do.
Mrs. Miller, like I said, well, the next question's going to get into that and possibly one other specific issue.
Well, thank you.
So, you know, what are we, what are we, as a city, doing right? What are we doing wrong?
I was going to ask, do you want me to answer your question, or do you want me to respond to what's going on behind the pink wall?
I'll let the audience be the judge of that.
Well, aren't we going to address what's behind the pink wall?
Yeah, what I want to know right now is, in general, what is the city doing right? What is the city doing wrong? The next question is going to focus specifically on that project, this world of Preston Center.
Okay, well, I'm going to respect your questions and your concerns, and then I'm happy to discuss what's going on behind the pink wall and PD-15 when you get to that question. So, what's going on with City Hall right now? There's been a lot of changes. We brought a lot of new management in, and we made a lot of different policy shifts. You know, we adopted a new housing policy. We're working on new economic development policy, and we're also working on new transportation policy. And with that, we're changing procedures and policies, and we're changing the way. You are most affected when things go through like a building code process. For me, building codes need to be in place to protect the neighborhoods, but they also need to be able to be navigable when people want change and we're going through the redevelopment process. As all of you know, it is a very linear process right now. You go to the water department, then you have to go over and get this permit, and then you've got to go to this, you know, Jefferson. And then you've got, then they tell you, "Oh, no, now when you're at the water department, your flood control's going to have to be done differently, so go back to Jefferson." So, we are making some changes to try to take all those systems, and instead of making it linear, make it a parallel so that you can go through your flood control, you can go through your other permitting processes, including the water department, all at the same time. We've made changes at City Hall in the last budget after taking the water department and the stormwater and making it under one water, which makes sense. We're actually setting up an enterprise where we now can actually fund flood control issues. Instead of waiting for bonds, we can do it through the stormwater fee. So, we're systematically making changes. I recognize sometimes when those are done, the policies don't always achieve the goal. You know, this new housing policy, we want to create 20,000 more units. If we have to continue after we adopted that, we're not to a full year, if we're not, if that policy's not creating units, we've got to continually assess. If it's not, then we've got to go back and amend the policy. And the same with regards to when we put an economic development policy in place or when we make these changes to development code. But we need to use our code to make sure that we address lots-and-lots drainage, that when people are building that they're not, you know, cutting through our streets and degrading our streets more. We're going to have to hold the builders accountable for, you know, your impact on, you know, around the construction sites as well. But we also want to be friendly because we have a goal of creating more housing units, and we want that process to work for all the builders so that you can partner with us and we can get more units in Dallas. You know, if our goal is 20,000 affordable units, we don't want to be the ones holding that process up. Am I about done with time, or?
I didn't see David dance yet, so.
Okay. So, those are just some of the things. I mean, we are, I think, as a City Hall, we want to be able to really work hand-in-hand. It's our neighborhoods that we're trying to protect. You know, you've heard about Article 10, and we might talk about Article 10 because that...
We will.
So, but one of the things that we're now looking at doing is an overlay that neighborhoods can adopt in. If that tree canopy is important to them, like it is in the Bluffview neighborhood, I've already been working with them. They're wanting to consider going for that ordinance, it's like a conservation district. I think when I was here six years ago, we talked about conservation districts, and we needed more people in the building department to be able to handle that process. And we've been able to do that. We've added staff, which makes our conservation districts follow all the rules, but it also lets you, when there's a neighbor that wants to remodel or reconstruct there, move through that process well. So, we're listening. It's all about, you know, protecting neighborhoods, but also being open and understanding of the process itself and how we can, you know, help the community redevelop or, you know, build a new home if necessary.
Okay, Mrs. Gates, I'll keep it with you for this. And here's my thought on how I would like both of you to address this question. Your viewpoints on the development of Preston Center and PD-15, it's really, really well documented, and, you know, you all have been involved quite a bit in this. Not everybody here, in fact, I would say most people here are not directly affected by that, but they're looking at these conversations to see, is that the exception or is that the rule in terms of how we should handle rezoning and how we should look at future residential projects? So, what I want you both to kind of harp on here is, we certainly would love to hear a summary of what your thoughts are on those projects in particular, but perhaps more importantly, is that the way things should go for future projects in the district and across the city? And if not, why?
Right. We did have a look that involved the entire community, seven different areas, made, as Ms. Miller referred to, the area plan. So, we have that document. That document is not a zoning document. If we actually want that document, that vision, to become reality, it will require rezoning. So, we have two areas, and I know Ms. Miller likes to just kind of mix them all together and not really identify the challenges in all the different areas. So, we have PD-15, which is 1948 zoning and very ambiguous. It has been, it was very clear by the city staff and the city attorneys that after Preston Place burned, that they didn't have the opportunity to be able to rezon and on their own, and they could only build exactly what they had, which we know exactly what they had doesn't meet the plan, and it's actually not really what the neighborhood, it doesn't make it more walkable, it doesn't help with flooding, it's actually not even four stories, and it's not, doesn't have much of a market anymore. So, we, it was a struggle. If it wasn't for the residents of Preston Place, we probably wouldn't have led this gone this path, but the staff and the city attorneys said we should do the authorized hearing, which is a little bit different than a development-driven. But the authorized hearing actually gives more opportunities for the community to be involved. And so, we've been working through this process for two years. And Ms. Miller kind of inserted herself at the end when she failed to mention that she owns the Athena, and it's a rental property. So, she has a vested interest and wants to make sure that, you know, it's not impacting her property, which also would put her, as a council member, would actually recuse her. She would not be able to represent that area if elected or work on a zoning case. So, we have the Athena residents and the tower residents, Preston Tower residents, that really do not want, they want to stop the process. They don't want to have the redevelopment. They don't want the process at all, which would then eliminate the possibility of redevelopment. So, we're working through, there is going to be, you know, a full, and we're analyzing all the traffic, you don't have that traffic document yet, but we're looking at the circulation within the PD-15, how it's going to affect the area around it, what's the impact on Northwest Highway? Can we open two-lane to Northwest Highway if there was redevelopment of Preston Place? Or, because they all, and she referred to this, they all have shared rights. Both the poor-low rises and the two-rises, the two-high rises currently have a density cap that governs their area. And when you ask, is this unusual, it's very unusual. You typically see six buildings within one PD, play development area, all within shared rights. The rest of behind the pink wall is not, there's one other PD that's at the very end of the new project, the Laurel. The rest of all those other low-rises are all just zoned MF1. So, if they aged out, they could just replace it and be able to just go, you know, apply and build and redevelop. That's not the situation with PD-15. It's been challenging. It's emotional, as you all know, any type of zoning changes. It's been very emotional for the 60 residents that are paying mortgages, taxes, and now rental property. And they have competing interests, high-rises and low-rises. So, we're trying to get to that right answer. So, that's kind of what's going on, you know, behind the pink wall, and hopefully we'll get to talk about Preston Center poor and the garage.
If I understand you correctly, it's the exception, not the rule?
It is definitely the exception, not the rule. And I don't think you, there's very, well, there's not any, anything else behind the pink wall that's zoned that way at all. I mean, I think the two-high rises are unusual for the area. And again, it's 1948 zoning.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller, same question. The PD-15 issue and the trials and tribulations of that, but also is that indicative of the way future rezoning that is inevitably going to occur within District 13 and throughout the city? Is that indicative of the way the process should be, or is that the exception to the rule?
Thank you. Councilwoman Gates, have you ever read the Code of Ethics of the city of Dallas?
Yes.
And do you know what it specifically says about financial conflicts of interest?
Yes.
And what does it say?
If you're, if you have, if we are within the notification zone, you can't participate in any conversation with it, as well as you cannot vote on that item.
That's not what it says. What it says is, is that if you are involved financially in a situation that's voted on by the Dallas City Council, where you will personally be making money, where other people will not be making money, but you personally are involved and will make money from it, then you have a financial conflict of interest. Example is when you were first elected to council and we had the Transwestern zoning case, and your family brokered the real estate deal, and you correctly interpreted the Code of Ethics and recused yourself. My living in the area plan area and having a rental apartment that we bought from my mother-in-law before she passed away has nothing to do with the Code of Ethics and any financial conflict of interest. I do not have a conflict of interest, nor would I be and will I be recusing myself from any vote involving zoning in the area. Number two, the most important thing for a council member to do in any city is to lead the developer and the homeowners to a solution that's a win-win for everybody with the least amount of fighting and aggravation and bitterness. That is the number-one job. And what is said about the PD-15 situation is that for the last six months, the 90% of the people who are opposed to the vote that's taking place in two weeks against their will have offered a solution to the pink wall situation. Our area plan recommended four stories maximum, any new development behind the pink wall. And we said that as a recommendation that wasn't binding, only because the people who lived there wanted that. And they were the most vocal of all of the neighborhood associations that we included in the area plan. So, of course, because that's what they wanted, we included that as a recommendation. The staff plan that Councilwoman Gates is pushing through, which instead of four stories, which is what the neighborhood wants, is 24 stories, two 24-story towers and two 10-story towers, all at one time with one vote, which is adamantly opposed by 90% of the people in the pink wall. And I say 90 because they are represented on the steering committee that Ms. Gates put together to help her come up with a recommendation. They represent, 90% of the people behind the pink wall opposing it. And those representatives, to their credit, went out and got their own urban planner and architect to come up with on their own time a solution for the pink wall that's 10 stories on Northwest Highway with four stories in the back. And they presented that to the councilwoman in December and said, "Please accept our compromise for our community." And she said, "No, I am pushing ahead with 24 stories." So, I will tell you, that is not the way City Hall is supposed to work. It's a win-win for everybody. That's the goal, is not fighting. There are 500-yard signs all around Preston Center right now. When you leave here, just drive around. Four different neighborhoods saying, "No more towers in Preston Center. Fix the traffic first." We had three pages of traffic recommendations in our area plan. Michael Morris was going to fund most of them with Text Dot. I flew to Text Dot on my own nickel to tell them what was happening. None of these transportation fixes have been pursued. That's why there are yard signs in all the yards.
Mrs. Miller, we'll stick with you on this, and this kind of pulls this string a little bit further. It's a lengthy question, but it really goes to the heart of the biggest thing that I'm personally concerned with, and I think it embodies the concerns collectively of our association. And it's the fact that working-class families have very few housing options in District 13 and, in fact, throughout the city. And we've alluded to that in some of the conversations here that we've had already today. You know, there's no way around it. There's the ugly fact that exclusionary zoning remains part of the city of Dallas. It's here because we're still one of the most economically segregated cities in the nation. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of examples of this "we don't want these people here" mentality being projected on those that have lesser economic means or maybe different housing preferences than others, or those in a rental situation. And so, in responding to this, we've got a two-part question. First, is this animosity towards new residents that we see in many areas and on many projects, is this concerning to you, that animosity? And then also, how can your leadership balance the need to build more inclusive and more diverse communities with the economic reality that in doing so includes increased density and a more intensive use than many established neighbors would prefer those properties to have?
You know, in all the zoning cases I've been handling through six years, when Ms. Gates has been on the council, a lot of neighborhoods come to me all the time. "Help me, help me. We've got this zoning case. We don't know what to do. We don't know how to handle it." And inevitably, in District 13, the word "affordable housing" comes up. And they say, "Oh, we don't want affordable housing." And I say, "Well, what do you mean by that?" I said, "Let me tell you what affordable housing is. Affordable housing is what my kids can afford when they get out of college and they have their first job and they need to get an apartment. That's what affordable housing is." So, what's wrong with that? And then they say, "Yeah, well, my son too. You know, he has a problem and he can't find a place to live and it's too expensive." And I say, "Well, don't you want your son to live near you and your husband? Wouldn't that be nice?" Well, yeah. So, affordable housing is, to me, a big bugaboo about nothing. I have spent the last year working on a pilot program to reduce homelessness. It was my idea. Take a person out of the bridge downtown, have a synagogue like mine, Thousand Families, take that person off the street into financial self-sufficiency. If our Thousand Families can't do it with our resources and no nonprofit money, no government money, no housing vouchers, then who can do it? So, we did that, and we took someone out of the bridge, 58-year-old man, and got him a better-paying job. He was getting eight bucks an hour, now he gets 12. He works as a cleanup. When you leave your popcorn at Studio Movie Grill on Spring Valley, he cleans it up. And we found him an apartment. Now, do you know how hard it was for us to find him an apartment? It was very hard. And we finally got one landlord who agreed to take him, and he has a very nice affordable housing complex right across Westland at Greenville and LBJ. It's a really nice apartment complex for $700 a month for a studio. And our tenant is the best tenant in the whole apartment complex. He doesn't bother anybody. He pays his bills on time every month, and when he falls short in his rent, we make up the difference. So, that's what affordable housing is. And so, that has to be the message from City Hall. I don't even want to call it affordable housing anymore. You call it housing, and it's all different price points, and it's all mixed together, and it's all over the city. You know, Bishop Arts, I worked so hard on Bishop Arts when I was a council member for Oak Cliff. And look what has happened in that area. It's the aura effect. Create, create a work-live-play environment and let it grow from there. And I applaud Mike Rawlings for his emphasis on the southern sector the last eight years. I applaud Peter Brod... I applaud Peter Brodsky for going in and tackling Valley, Valley to XMS, Red Bird Mall. I applaud him. And those aura centers will develop and hopefully bring all the housing and all the development that we desperately need south of downtown.
But what about, I'm going to ask a follow-up question, so stop the clock there, David. I think it's about everything when it comes to having access to communities and being able to access the great communities that we have here in District 13. So I would argue that those choices are very limited here. And that's wonderful what you're able to do for the one individual. But would you, would you agree that a lot of the arguments that we see, again, some of these multifamily projects are not really about the traffic and are not really about the inanimate objects that are the buildings or the people that are building them, that a lot of them are geared towards the people that are housed within them? And then what can you do when that happens as a leader to be the voice of reason and tell them that we have priorities for the city that may not be the priority of your perceived threat to your property?
Yeah, and I disagree that it's about the tenants. I really do. I mean, you all saw this magazine, the New Urbanism that D Magazine did last year. It's fabulous. And we ought to be following it. And it's not about the price point, it's about the design and how it looks and where its position and how you build it. And you can have a small lovely, you know, some of the nicest houses that I go to when I walk door-to-door for this campaign are the tiniest houses that were built in 1946. And they're cottages and they're beautiful and they're tiny. And they're perfectly maintained and they have nice windows and they have nice landscaping. And so you can build less expensive housing that is attractive, that's nice to live in. So I think a lot of the big boxy multifamily in Dallas is what turns people off. What's being built right now at Forest and Inwood turns a lot of people off. It's a senior community, but I don't want to move in there when I downsize my place. It looks like a typical multifamily, big box, no landscaping, no walkability, on a big road kind of project. And the people who live around it wished it looked like the pretty pictures that they were shown when it was being rezoned. And that is a common problem in our area.
All right. Bankers, you've got a lot of magic to make happen there for sure. I want to-
Building 1,500 square feet on million-dollar acres?
Yeah, and I also want to talk about those realities and the balance we have here.
How does that work?
You want to repeat the question because-
Yeah, what I want to get to the heart of is-
The heart of the board going-
We have systemic issues-
Yeah, we have systemic issues and we have a housing policy now that has an MVA. And the MVA is actually backed by economics. And it says, what areas are ripe, ripe for redevelopment? And they are. They're the areas closest to the downtown in the successful neighborhoods that we're seeing around downtown, areas that can hold a little more density, areas that are, you know, by, I mean, by transportation opportunities, on dark stations. You know, you see that Mockingbird or, you know, the Cedars, the areas around Uptown. That's something that's underdeveloped that has the opportunity to be successful. So we have three different categories. We have that, that something that's ripe for redevelopment. And then we have stabilization areas where, like Bishop Arts, it's gotten so successful, people are being gentrified out of the area. So where can we kind of keep some residents there and have mixed income? An area that I would like to see that is actually ready for some redevelopment but needs stabilization is my Vicarato neighborhood. It's 110 multifamily complexes, a lot of lower income, but mixed income would help everybody in that area. And it actually can contain more density because it's on, it's on the dark station, has a lot of public transportation options. So when we, this week, we actually, or last week, we adopted voluntary inclusive zoning. So if you have MF2 and you want to do MF3 and you're willing to do a percentage of it that is affordable, then you could do that. And that will help areas like Vicarato that have high density that could redevelop and then be able to retain an affordability component. We can't do it one resident at a time. We actually have, as the housing policy identified, 20,000 affordable units short. It's great if congregations and communities want to start helping one homeless person at a time, but that will take us decades and decades and decades to be able to meet all the needs of our community. So we have to look, take the housing policy, look where the opportunities lie, and then we have to work within the communities when we have redevelopment possibilities. I don't believe in changing any residential zoning to anything other than residential if it's single-family homes. But when it has commercial, commercial property or multifamily property, you've got to have an opportunity for redevelopment and then you have to work within the neighborhood. Forest One was a rental property. It was all rental. When it was rebuilt, it was rebuilt to have active senior living as well as, they haven't even started the product, they have one-story rentals as well as a townhome. We worked with those neighbors. It was unanimous at City Hall. Actually, if you go down Drujon, every house that backs up to that development has a Jennifer Staubach-Gates sign in it, including the one in the corner, because we worked with all the neighbors that are impacted by that development for a year and a half process to make sure that we could redevelop it appropriately. And we do have a problem. We were at the zoning, one of the meetings with PD 15, and this is what we heard. If you build an apartment, well, who's going to live there? Renters? And we're like, yes, renters. What, can they have families? Yes. Can they have children? That's a concern. And that, you know, you don't know how much of that then gets, you know, transferred over the fact that, oh, it is traffic, we're worried about density, when it is potentially worried about a community that doesn't look like them.
And let me ask, and David, hold the phone for a second. I agree with Mrs. Miller in the sense that there's a different connotation when you talk about affordable housing versus housing affordability. And just that's how people are conditioned and how it goes. This affordable housing, buy-ride type of approach that we've taken, now it is a buy-ride type of approach. So how, when this gets into action in one of these MVAs, are you going to be able to reconcile some of those feelings that are inevitably going to come out of the woodwork with the fact that it's a buy-ride, very systemic thing that has been put into place by the council?
Well, I don't think just that, that's true. The opportunity to be able to build by right, we're going to have to kind of work through the process. I don't know if the economics are going to even make that work. I think we're going to have, but we need to offer those, the carrots before we do any kind of regulations and make somebody build affordable. That doesn't, we haven't had a, like, success doing that. Cities have tried that to regulate it and require people or builders. But if you actually have, you know, the opportunity for a carrot, if you do this, you get X. Or if you put more green space, you get, you can build a little taller. Those type of opportunities. I mean, it's, what if by right is going to be built by right? But I do think people need to understand that, you know, if you have average area income at 80 to 120%, that's somebody making between $40,000 and $60,000 in Dallas. So that is your teachers, your firefighters, your social workers.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to keep it with you, Mrs. Gates. And as we warned, we're going to talk trees here for a second. And the recently updated ordinance in Dallas is called Article 10, the Tree Ordinance. And it's posing a major challenge for Dallas VA members. And part of that is due, in fact, a big part of that is due to the lack of clarity in its interpretation. It's 64 pages long, which is ironic when you print it out, the number of trees involved there. The manual that, the manual that goes-
You shouldn't be printing it out. You can pull it up on a computer. I've been printing out agendas since I worked at City Hall. I'm looking it up on my computer.
I'm glad people don't, but even worse, the manual that tells you how to comply with it is about 300 pages. And right now it's only being interpreted by the city arborists. We all agree that preserving the biggest and the best trees is essential to responsible development. I don't think anyone in here should dispute that. However, paying mitigation fees for smaller trees and less desirable ones like hackberries really add up and become a tremendous expense when you look at an old field that maybe has been overgrown or left alone for, you know, a short period, 10 or 15 years. So given the aforementioned issues with Article 10, and we're about a year or so into encountering it, and a lot of these things are what the Dallas VA warned would happen once we got into it, do you think that the ordinance should be reevaluated and should be fine-tuned? Or do you think it's getting the job done as it is? And if you'd fine-tune it, how would you, how would you look at it?
All ordinances that have been amended or adopted new need to be evaluated for their success. If we're trying to save more trees, we could look and see, are we saving more trees? How is the process working? If it's, if it's too bureaucratic to actually try to identify what you need to take down with what you need to remain or mitigate, then we could make things clearer. But we know that we, we're in a heat, I mean, it's hot in Dallas and we need the canopies and we need trees to, you know, for air quality. And it's important. I mean, we get less, I mean, I'm a tree hunter. I've got one of the best trees in Dallas in my backyard. But I, so I'm going to work hard to make sure that we can achieve the kind of canopies and trees that we are, we value in our city. But we also need to work and make sure that we're not, our tree policies, our Article 10 is not fighting the affordable, the affordable housing crisis that we're finding ourselves in as well. So, and, you know, the park dedication, all these need to work together. I wasn't, I mean, I was supportive of putting that in place, but I was concerned that the park dedication, the money that you needed to put in for parks in North Dallas, we're not going to help us achieve parks in North Dallas because of the price of the land. And in South Dallas, you're probably pricing it too high. So it's like, how could we make that work that the amount of money you need to put in for a park dedication in South Dallas will allow for, because you're, you're working on unapproved land and you're actually adding to the housing stock. And then when you're doing something in North Dallas, that we can actually get the benefit of green space as well. So I, we need to keep looking at it, but we also need to, you know, make sure that parks and green space and trees are protected in our city.
Certainly with the park ordinance coming into effect here shortly, that's a balance we have to strike. You alluded to a little bit ago, the forestry overlay that's about to come before the council, and that pertains to existing homes and what you can do with beautiful trees like the one that you have in your backyard or problematic trees that you may need to get out of the way. What about a situation, and this is unfortunately a situation that this ordinance creates, where I'm a homeowner and I've got a tree in my backyard and I've got an arborist that says, hey, that tree doesn't, in our opinion, that tree is hazardous. It's eventually going to fall down when we have a big storm this time of year. Or a geotechnical engineer says, the roots of this tree are threatening the foundation of your home. Should the homeowner have the right to take down that tree without having to pay a fee to the city?
Is that, would the overlay, if you would put the overlay in place?
With the overlay-
Well, I think it's important to realize the overlay is opt-in. So a neighborhood would have to opt-in. We're not going to be putting more restrictions unless the neighborhood itself is willing to put that in.
Right, but the homeowner, with the 75% threshold, presumably may not have opted in.
They might not, and then they would have that opportunity. I mean, they would have that restriction on their property. If, I think there's going to be ways that we can look at trees that meet certain criteria. And actually, around the footprint of the home itself, there is a space now. So I think you're picking one situation that's maybe not likely if it's depending on where it is on the property. Because we're doing a footprint or, we can work-
It's more common than you think. Unfortunately, that's our, that's our biggest concern with it right now.
With the way, there's no way to actually, well, we could all talk about it. I mean, that's why we continue to meet with both homeowners, neighborhoods, as well as, you know, the associations that are involved in building it to see if we can find a balance. I've always been able to be able to get people in the room and let's figure out what's the best solution. We do that for transportation policies related to, you know, Uber and Lyft when they came to town or groups like yours as well that are building homes. You know, how can we, how can we find a battleground that we can make sure that we're not taking someone's property rights as well? I mean, it is their property right. And make sure they have the ability to build the home, but then also be able to protect integrity of the neighborhood.
Right.
I mean, we all exist within neighborhoods, so, you know.
I would argue that in that situation, you have not only a right, but a duty to take down the tree if it's going to be potentially falling down on something or somebody in your backyard. But the conversation, I don't know if you have anything else to add. I haven't been paying attention to David on where we are on time. But he's not dancing, so I think we're good. Okay. Mrs. Miller?
Can I talk about trees?
Yes, absolutely. Please talk about trees and especially Article 10 and the fact that we have a very cumbersome ordinance that we've been living with for just about a year right now. We have raised as an association a few nuanced concerns. A lot of times with trees and something that's very emotionally charged, the nuanced concerns really don't get heard. But I hope you've heard some of the ones that I've brought up. And how would you evaluate that issue as a council member?
Well, I'm glad the overlay hasn't passed yet because we, my husband and I just took down the biggest, most beautiful tree in our front yard because it had lube rod. And Steve Hauser's Arboretological Services came over and told us if we didn't take it out, it would fall on the house. So we took it out. So obviously that's an issue that needs to be discussed because homeowners need to protect their property. Secondly, I started when I was mayor, the Urban Forest Advisory Board, which was the city's first advisory board for trees, and I'm very proud of that. So I also am a big advocate for trees and for keeping as many trees as possible when you're building something. I think the, one of the reasons for the, for the new ordinance is just the sensitivity of all the people that you're dealing with, neighbors, when you come in and build a new house next door. And obviously, there are trees that have to go or you can't build a new house. But there was a woman I talked to yesterday who has a tree named Fred because Fred was planted when she was a little girl 60 years ago. And so when they came and built the new house next door recently, they told her they were going to have to chop down Fred. And she said, you're not going to chop down Fred. And they said, well, we have to put a gas line, you know, under Fred. Well, no, you're not going to do that. So anyway, it lasted and lasted. And she went to lunch one day and she came back from lunch and heard the thunk, thunk, thunk of the ax and went outside and they were chipping away at the roots of the tree. And so, you know, that was a big war and she won and it was all, it was all okay. But, you know, this happens, as you all know, every single day when you're dealing with building a new little house or an apartment complex and you're, and you've got people who just really love their trees. So I agree with Ms. Gates that a new ordinance that has unintended consequences needs to be reviewed and needs to work for everybody.
Well, and I would say, what are your thoughts on the situation where you've got to prioritize a homeowner being able to maintain a safe property versus the collective viewpoint of trying to protect Fred and some of the other trees out there?
Yeah, I assume if Fred gets a disease, that she will take it down.
Okay.
I also just want to mention one thing. I know Ms. Gates said that you can't just, you know, solve the world. It'll take too long to do one homeless person at a time. But just for all of you out there to go to church and synagogues and mosques, there are 4,000 people who are homeless in Dallas and Cullen Counties. There are 3,000 churches, mosques and synagogues. And if every one of those took on one homeless person as their project, and it's not a short-term project, it's a long-term project of taking care of somebody's life, it could make a huge difference. We haven't gone public with our program because we want to see how it works and if it works and what all the kinks are. But, but it's really valuable and I think it will make a big difference in Dallas-Fort Worth once we're able to present how we did it and what the obstacles are.
Okay, great. We're going to move on to some audience questions. We've got about 15 minutes left. Same rules will apply, up to four minutes for a response. Of course, the more succinct the responses are, the more questions we get to, for better or for worse. I would like for you all, if you ask a question, to ask it to both of the candidates and not just a one in particular, so we're not having unequal time for the two ladies who were wonderful enough to join us today. So Alan, you're up first.
I am a fan of the concept of new urbanism and also seeing clusters of mixed use with fanning lower density on the perimeter. That is, we, Dallas is like a giant wagon wheel and we have intersections that meet that create these natural clusters of density with retail. But in many instances, there needs to be additional density. And how do you weigh, and this is kind of a different version of the same question Phil was talking about, how would you look at, for instance, I live near Castellina, not in your district, but there's some duplex zoning, there's some, there are some single-family higher-density zoning that would allow for additional redevelopment so that we could achieve the walkable use to go ahead and walk to the grocery store, live in a neighborhood. Dallas was not built in, with new urbanism initially in mind, but when you have these large commercial areas where you can actually have an office, go to a grocery store and maybe walk home, that would work very well, much like a city like Toronto has done. And so you have pockets of density. What are your thoughts of neighborhoods coming together? There is going to be opposition to all of this. And that's where the global perspective of what's good for the city things play. So what are your thoughts about it?
But that's why these single-shot zoning cases freak out neighborhoods and homeowners and they're like, oh my gosh, it's going to be a high-rise. If you have an area plan, a vision for your community, like we did for Preston Center, our vision after two years-
years of working, our unanimous vision, and we have half developers, half homeowners on our task force, for Ms. Gates, take that old dilapidated garage in Preston Center, it's been there since the sixties, put a park instead, put underground parking, and then just like downtown with Clyde Warren, imagine what that does to Preston Center overnight. And then, we said with our recommendations, development will come around that park. It will be high, it'll be, it'll be high-rise residential, that's our preference. We have enough office already in Preston Center. But be prepared, because it will spawn development. And everyone was okay with that, and neighborhoods expected that. And the only problem we had was, there's no park. Now there's going to be an apartment tower built on that site instead, which is not the vision that we have for that area. I had personally raised ten million dollars for the park. Michael Morris was going to put in with COG, twenty to thirty million dollars for the underground garage, if Ms. Gates was able to match it with twenty million dollars in the 2017 city bond package. Ms. Gates obtained ten million in the city bond package, and since we didn't have twenty, the park imploded. There is no park project. So my goal, if I am elected, is to build the park with the underground garage. Now, you will hear, oh, the parking, the people who work around Preston Center don't want it. The parking corporation of all those merchants, we're on our task force. They said, yes, we'll do the park with the garage. But you know what, Laura? The city will never come up with the money. They disappoint us every time. So we need a Plan B. And unfortunately, they were right. So now we have a Plan B. And I want Plan A.
Ms. Gates, you're talking about density, where it's appropriate, how it's appropriate, and how to work through some of those issues.
Well, these, these mixed-use areas in Preston Center is a perfect example that we can have some live, work, play. And we do have the vision that had the park and the garage underneath. It was very clear immediately that the stakeholders said absolutely no to underground parking. And it wasn't just about the money. They, they said no before we, in the summer, leading up to the bond. And I went and spoke with them, and they said, we could come up with a compromise. And I still put the bond money, all District thirteen, all their economic development dollars, as well as all the discretionary dollars, which was ten million dollars, and we got the, and we got a match from COG. The park, the park donation is really fascinating, because I met with that same donor, and that donor made it very clear that that park money was only available if it was conditioned to a no zoning on St. Michael's case. And you know what? I don't work and operate that way. That's not ethical. And, and then that park, that park donation was never available. And now we see that that same person is, you know, fighting St. Michael's and any development that happens on it, because it's protecting their view corridor from a high-rise. So we are working for a solution to try to make a greener Preston Center and one that has more residential living. I've not taken a position on Mr. Dozier's project, which is the high-rise that she's speaking of. He would like, the stakeholders would like us actually to redevelop the garage. They're opposed to underground development. And the neighborhood is actually really concerned with having a destination park or center. They want the, they want Preston Center to work for the surrounding area, and to be able to be their live, work, play, and not be bringing in people from all over town and adding work adjusted to traffic to the area. We are working with Michael Morris. He is, several studies are in place to look at in Texas U-turn, as well as other traffic improvements in that area. And until we can have a coalition of what, how we need to move forward, we're not going to be, you know, erecting any high-rises until we know what it's all going to look like and have it master planned. But exactly, when things have old-aged commercial product or multifamily, you've got to have a plan for redevelopment. And the cities have to take initiative to make sure that we're part of that planning process, and that we don't just let it happen haphazardly. And this is a good, we have a plan, but to make that plan to actually happen, that will have to have rezoning, because it's not zoned to meet the plan. So we have the vision, and then we have to move through as the market allows us to, and work with, continue to work with the stakeholders. I think I'm that kind of candidate. I can work as a collaborator, a consistence builder. I don't think, my opponents ever showed she actually has that ability to be able to get things done. And she could talk about a vision, but I can't, I don't have it, be able to see a vision that's ever been able to occur or take place, because she's not able to take it to the next level. We're going to take those ideas in Preston Center, and we're going to work really hard to make it work. And we're going to have more green space and more residential.
All right, let's take it to the next question. Jeff's about to jump out of his boots. Do you have a question for both?
(laughing)
Do you have a question for both candidates?
I promise you, this is for both of you. We, we all realize we have a fourteen-one council-type situation. So you can't, you can't change everything overnight. But during your term as mayor, during your term as council member, we just keep seeing the feds coming into City Hall. We have two past council members now who await sentencing. There's at least five others that have spent time in the last couple of decades, both during your mayoralship and during your time on council, that it seems to be the feds keep coming in. How, beforehand, you talked about ethics a little bit, Madam Mayor. So, my question to both of you is, how do we clean this up down at City Hall, so that the feds don't keep coming in?
Yeah.
Year after year, and taking council members, let alone all the other things they're investigating? The citizens need to have confidence in what's going on down at the Horseshoe, not what's going on behind the scenes and behind the curtain at the Horseshoe.
That question is nearly as good as the quote that Mrs. Miller shared with us earlier, so.
Good question. Very, very good question. And one, we need to look at ethics reform. But your ethics can only be, I mean, we can make it stronger and stronger and stronger, but when someone's willing to break the law, you know, having a real strong ethics policy can be irrelevant. But I know sometimes it's holding other council members accountable, and as important it is to get to eight votes to get things done, I'm okay being the Lone Ranger. And I was the Lone Ranger when Dallas County Schools asked for a forty-seven-year contract extension on the school bus program. And we know that that school bus program is what led to Dallas County Schools failing and costing a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to our taxpayers, as, because DCS is its own taxing jurisdiction. But they needed a contract with the city to be able to issue those tickets. And I was recognizing we were having problems with the tickets. And Mr. Greggs and Mr. Madrona and I had all signed a memo asking for that, that, that policy, or that agreement that we had in place, to be reviewed, because we were, getting complaints about people getting multiple tickets. And we weren't getting that briefing, we weren't getting that briefing. And sure enough, on six months later, it shows on the addendum consent to extend that contract for forty-seven years. And it's on the consent, and it's on the addendum, so it gave us five days. I pulled it on Monday morning, and guess who ran into my office? Rick Sorrell, Dwayne Carraway, Larry Duncan, and they begged me to try to put it back on, to try to put it back on on Wednesday. I said, no, I'm not putting it back on Wednesday. We're going to talk about it. And I talked about it, and I asked my fellow council members, can't we brief this before we vote on it? And zero votes. And then they continued to push, and, and they voted that day to go ahead without a briefing and extend that, or they, they amended the contract to twenty-five years. And that was in May of seventeen. And several of my council members took legal money. They took money in campaign contributions. And then obviously, we found out Mr. Carraway, who'll be sentenced this Friday, was taking money illegally. So when I, when I see something that doesn't look right, doesn't smell right, I didn't know it was, any legal activity was happening at the time, but there was, but we needed to understand what the city's agreement was. And we, and I only make educated and informed decisions. I'm a nurse by background, that's how I was taught. And, and in this case, I needed to understand what the city's agreement was, and it, I just couldn't figure out why they wouldn't brief it and let us know. And was able to stand up and say no, when the rest of my colleagues weren't.
Mrs. Miller, your response to Jeff's question on ethics at City Hall?
The number one way for us to significantly reduce corruption at City Hall is to change the way we do zoning. I remember I was sitting at the Horseshoe when I was mayor, and James Fanchroy stood up, and he left the Horseshoe. And he said, I have a conflict of interest. He left the Horseshoe. So I turned to Don Hill, who was the mayor pro temp at the time. I said, where's Fanchroy going? He said, oh, he has a financial conflict, conflict of interest. I said, well, what's the conflict? Well, if this developer gets his project passed, then Fanchroy gets the security contract. So I said, say that again? So, and he goes, yeah, and I'm handling it for him. So, so I went down, I should have stopped the meeting and said right out loud what was happening, but I was so shocked. I went, I went down to the podium and asked the developer's representative if indeed Mr. Fanchroy would get the contract of Mr. Hill to pass. And he said, yes, as though it was just normal. So I called us all into executive session with the city attorney, and I said, this just happened, and I want the city attorney to investigate this matter, and I don't want this voted on today. And we all need to have a talk, a talk about what goes on here. And, two council members said, well, Laura, we don't understand where you draw the line. So we had that conversation. Anyway, that was an executive session. After Don Hill went to prison, and I testified against him in federal court, I went back to the city council, and I gave them, I prepared a briefing. And I said, let's change how we do zoning. And when we have a case that's a fairly significant zoning case that affects a community, we should not have one council member in charge of making the recommendation for that zoning change. We should have three or four council members, depending on how big of an impact that case has on how much of a community. And therefore, you take out the one council member, one developer paradigm, which is where you often get the problem. Because that developer that is being asked to do things that they're uncomfortable doing, and instead of going to the feds, they do that thing. And that's what's led to a lot of the corruption. So at the time, the council did not want to go that route. They liked having their own zoning areas without other council members interfering. That's how it's worked for, ever since fourteen-one began. I think with this new council, there would be a lot of new faces. The mayoral candidates are correctly discussing corruption and what we should do about it. So I think this new council should be and will be open to making some changes that will hopefully impact that significantly.
All right, thank you. We're at the top of the hour, and afterwards, if you don't mind, we'll get a quick photo over there. Again, thank you both so very much for joining us today and being a part of the conversation.
You can let us wrap up in two minutes?
Yeah, I'll give you, and we got, we've got a minute. I'll give you all ninety seconds if you want to wrap up.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for having us. And I continue to have an open door at, at City Hall, I will for the next two years after I re-elected, to work with neighborhoods and, and advocates like yourselves, because it takes all of us working together to really make the city a great place. I, you know, I've enjoyed being a council member for six years, and I'm working really hard to get re-elected. I plan on it. And I just, lastly, though, I do want to, I wanted, that ethics, it is, it is being on, and we both experienced this, having colleagues that had, you know, corruption and had sentencing, going to jail, and it reflects on the whole body as a city. We need to step up and make changes. We need to, I know, we still vote on everybody's zoning case, all fourteen of us, I voted against, council members, and even zoning cases in their districts, if I felt like it hasn't been vetted, or the community hasn't been actively involved. And I'm going to, that ethics, I have read the ethics, and I want, there's another case, I just want to bring this up, Jesuit. Jesuit had a case recently, and we looked at the notification zone, and my, I had a family member that owned within that notification zone. And guess what the lawyers told me? I was recused, that I had a conflict of interest, because I had a family member that was in the notification zone. No financial interest, but was on the notification zone. And so I recused myself in the Jesuit case. So I take ethics to the extreme. I mean, if there's any question, then I make sure that I recuse myself, and I immediately recuse myself in that case. And I'll, I'll continue to do that. So, but I'm not hearing that same, that same kind of expression or, or truthfulness from my phone.
Mrs. Miller, quote?
I just want to thank you all very much for being here today. I enjoyed very much being a council member from Oak Cliff twenty years ago. I enjoy being mayor. I enjoy getting a lot of things done as mayor. I think every mayor can count on one hand, but they truly did. You tend to work on a lot of different issues, and, and you're the only one that's elected citywide, so you're involved in everything. But, but, but all of us, all of us mayors can probably count to a couple of things that they did, and I can look at mine and be very proud of that. But I don't want to do that anymore. I want to be granular. I want to focus on neighborhoods. I want to focus on what you all do. I want to make your jobs easier, and I want the homeowners to like what you do in return. I think that we have an enormous amount of growth coming, millions of people coming to our area. We are the second fastest-growing area in the country, and there'll be a lot of change. And the more that you can communicate with the homeowners and City Hall can help you do it, the better our community will be. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just leave you with a final thought here. Whether you live in District thirteen or another district in the city of Dallas, please vote. Please participate in the process. Please vote in your own city council election if you don't live in the city of Dallas. The registration deadline in Dallas is today. Early voting starts on April twenty-second, and the same day as our Parade of Homes, Election Day is May fourth. Be sure to participate in the process. It affects you every single day infinitely more than anything that happens at the state or at the national level that you hear ad nauseam on TV. Thank you both very much for coming here, joining us, having this discussion, and for your service to everyone here in the city of Dallas. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Phil as a moderator today, and Phil's staff for putting this together. Take care. We are adjourned.